Good evening, it is six o'clock. This is Robert Stevenson. I'm calling to order the Southwood Town and Granville Regional School Committee regular meeting on Tuesday, November the 16th. Can I get a motion to start the meeting?
Okay.
Show my hands to the meeting. Motion passes six zero zero. Can I get everybody to stand with this for the lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as strong.
Alright, secretary report, we have the minutes from our meeting on the second. Anybody have any questions for that, for the minutes there? Everybody was in person. Oh, oh. It says participating to use them. Without any questions, can I get a motion acceptance? Second two motions, just a second. Alright, I get to show my hands to approve the minutes from November the second. Can you show the record that that motion passes six zero zero? Okay. Warrants, we get the warrants going around. I think everybody's got those signed. Superintendent Willard, do we have any correspondence this week?
We do not.
Right, we're on a run, yes. That takes us to our first public comment section. We have nobody in attendance to do public comments, so we'll be able to go through that rather quickly. You guys ready?
Oh, yeah.
Alright, so we have two student representatives here. Student advisory report, Annette, take it away.
SR senior Katie Turkot placed second in the, at the junior ladies USFS championship in Norwood over the weekend. She is now ranked eighth on the East Coast and twentieth nationally, the US Figure City Skating Championship Series, which is pretty incredible.
Yeah.
I think that's pretty amazing, and she's one of our seniors who's been in the district forever. Winter student athletes are also getting excited for their upcoming season as fall sports have come to a close.
And our school is participating in the Mayflower Marathon food drive through November twenty-third. And all students and staff can bring non-perishable food items to place them in the box for your grade. So how we used to do with penny wars, we're doing it this year with the food drive. So each grade is gonna have a box and whichever grade bring in the most food items, that class will get a celebration. And the winning school with most items gets a pizza party and chance to win money for their school from the Rock One Two Radio Station that's hosting.
So there's a lot of schools around that's actually competing, and it goes to a very good cause. This weekend, it is the Fall Play. They are doing a Little Princess and all tickets can be found on the school website, and there's four shows over three days.
And the SRS seniors have been participating in the gear up for college. Schools have the opportunity to meet students, review their completed application, and give them an instant decision. So that started today and then tomorrow.
Seniors Helping Seniors, which is a committee that's from the National Honor Society, has been cleaning residents of the towns, specifically senior citizens. It's through the senior center and town, and a lot of students are getting involved with volunteer work and raking weeks of fall. It will continue throughout the winter with the winter snow removal. Student Council has been also brainstorming the potential themes for this year's Spirit Week and then other events throughout the year. Specifically, they've been working on a project that revolves around inclusion at SRS. Student council members have come up with some T-shirt designs that follow the whole Rams along hashtag. The idea is that all students and staff will get these, the same T-shirt promoting unity, and then we tie that into Spirit Week. Having that be the last day of Spirit Week, because it used, it used to be kind of like a Rams pride, but like providing a T-shirt for everyone would maybe be something more incentive and inclusive to everybody. And we're still like in the process of planning all of this. The NHS Holiday Food Drive is up and running, and that's always pretty big. I know my staff so does one down at the elementary school.
She's working together this year with.
I believe it was like bigger than last year, because there was two different ones going on here, but a lot of people are getting involved, and its staff are getting involved, which is really exciting for all the donations. But that concludes my student advisory report. Everything's well up there.
Thank you very much. Alright, educational presentation. Mrs. Sullivan, are you ready?
Yes, I am.
Alright.
I'm here tonight to run you through our elementary and secondary emergency relief fund grants. This is the third grant that has been released under ESR. This one was quite a bit bigger than the first two. It was part of President Biden's American Rescue Plan Act. The application was submitted in the beginning of October and is still waiting DSS approval at this time. The funds must be used for COVID-19 related spending and include a minimum of twenty percent total grant allocated to addressing learning gaps in, in students, so identifying and addressing any learning gaps. It can be used for expenses dating back to the beginning of the state of emergency on March twentieth, twenty twenty, all the way through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And we got two million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So twenty percent of that was four hundred and twenty-four and some change, and that's the amount that we needed to use to address the learning loss. So, one of the things that we're required to do to submit for the grant was to input, receive stakeholder input on how we were gonna have to reduce the money. So what we did is we surveyed the district. We put together a survey based on some of the requirements of the things that we needed to, we were able to use the money for. We sent the survey to families, staff, and students to determine their priorities. The top concern that came back from all stakeholders was increased personnel to provide supports to students and to reduce class sizes. Other concerns that came up in the survey were providing tutoring and summer learning opportunities, as well as purchasing high-quality instructional materials to identify and ameliorate any learning loss that we may have identified. Next slide please. The grant was written to include some additional personnel for the end of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Includes additional teachers and a pair, additional teachers and an additional paraprofessional at Woodland to reduce class size, reading and math interventionist at Paternville School, a five oh four coordinator to support students with disabilities, and teachers for the summer learning programs for the next two years.
The twenty, the, the additional grade one teacher, twenty twenty-three, like, so we're still two years off from that, like, how do you? I guess, how do we know that we need that?
We don't. If we don't need it, then then.
This is you had to look forward, what you.
Exactly. And, and the studies are showing now that if students are not reading at grade level by the end of grade one, then it's very difficult. So we really wanna make sure that we have low class sizes in K and one, especially with our science degree.
Yeah, and according to our acceleration roadmap, which has been sort of our guiding document, this is supposed to be a minimum of a two-year process where we're putting these, these things in place to make up for the disruptive learning that happened last year and the, and the, in the spring of the previous year. So we're trying to be forward-thinking in, in that. In addition to that, we wrote some curricular resources into the grant. We have provided twenty-four seven access to an online tutoring program for students in grades three through twelve for the next two years. We have purchased some other software programs to support student learning and communication. And we've allocated some funds for high-quality instructional materials for science, time for which was reduced last year and this year due to the pressures created by requiring mask rates. The district also paid for the credit recovery summer school courses for any students in grades seven to twelve who struggled with distance learning this past year. In addition, we also wrote into the grant some supplies and materials related to COVID-19 safety measures and readiness for virtual instruction and virtual meetings. Several capital expenditures were written into the grant to include the health and safety of our students and staff related to COVID-19, such as improved air quality, improved internet connectivity, and improved safety during outside instruction and outdoor mask rates. That concludes my presentation to the school committee. I want some, any questions that you may have?
Kenny, just to make sure it's clear, we have allocated all of that two million dollars inside these items that we've identified, right? There's nothing left over that we're waiting around to be used for something else. Everything's been allocated and identified and, and, and put forward in a, in a line item.
Correct. We needed to write the, the grant for how we plan to spend it over the three years.
Right. I just wanna make sure people don't think that we've got like five hundred thousand dollars in cash just sitting in a, you know, slush fund somewhere that we can pull up and know whatever we want.
That, that wasn't an option in the grant.
The slush fund section wasn't there, right?
Couldn't find it.
I guess I could have put it under other expenses, but I don't know if we can slip that by.
I could have this confusion, but so I remember we had a discussion at the, when this was first starting to happen about what we could use for capital expenditures and what we couldn't use. So obviously, they clarified that. I know there were some, so are these, what, I guess, what did they end up landing on? What was allowed and what was like out of bounds? Like, because I see the H-back, I remember that being a thing that we thought, gosh, if we could use this, that'd be great, right?
Yeah. Well, we, we don't know for certain yet, because they haven't formally approved our request on those capital items. It was a whole separate capital app, application. Capital project application form that went along with the, with the grant. So we've submitted all that. The threshold was thirty thousand dollars and above needed to go if you were doing capital type item, purchase of equipment or improvements to a, to a building or an addition. Like, we, we were on some of the webinars that Desi was holding, and I, I listened to presentations from school business officials in larger communities where they're putting entire wings on, on schools to relieve overcrowding and combat the virus spread that way.
They got enough ESR three funds to pay for it. I assume the first three pages of stuff, they're just total capital stuff.
There are, there are districts that are getting, let's see, one, two, three, nine, nine figures.
I sold furniture in, in amounts of like one point two billion dollars to one school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
If, for John to answer your question, though, it has to be related to preparing for COVID-19. So, so the things that we did, like the Wi-Fi network, that's important for connectivity purposes. The H-back upgrade up is an obvious one for air quality, but the outdoor speakers and the increased key access, that's because we're spending more time outdoors, and in the event that we need to notify of the key people outside, the, of the need to get in quickly and get them in quickly, those were identified. A few years back, we were all talking about locking everybody in. Now it's about getting them outside and getting them back in.
We're trying to adjust to that.
Shelter in place.
Yeah, exactly. This year.
Well, it was in the spring, right?
Yes.
Was it the spring?
It was in the spring. Because the online students didn't know about it.
I don't think Steve and I ever moved so fast in our lives.
You did. You did. I was telling you that.
Birdling. She just needs to outrun you, Steve. That's it. Not the bear. You really gotta be faster than the slowest person.
Just in my opinion, this is such a conservative way to allocate the funds. I mean, there are other districts that are doing things that you would never manage in.
Well, how much was it again? Like four hundred thousand?
This is to go like two million.
But we had to use, but is this.
Four hundred thousand for that, the minimum that we need to use for weight loss.
But this allocates two million. Right.
We, just over two million, this total in that figure. And just to give you some context, the ESR two was only about nine hundred thousand. The ESR one was only about two hundred and twenty thousand. So it's quite, quite an increase.
It's more than double the first two combined.
Well, it seems like it's spread out pretty nicely. It rocks a lot of different things. It's good.
Great job, Jenny. Thank you very much. Alright. Thank you. Alright, any more questions on that? Are we gonna move on? Alright, so policies. Up first, JJIF for concussions is our second reading for that. We've made minor adjustments to this policy. Basically just to identify, I think in yellow last time, I mean?
No.
Changed. But we had.
That's the homeschool.
Oh, right, okay.
Yeah.
I think the biggest thing that we adjusted again was on the second page where the fact that the play policy is the athletic trainer is not available, that the athletic director is able to identify somebody that can do that. Oh, there we go. Seats and room. Any question on this concussion policy? Good, alright. Okay, first reading for our second one, IHBG homeschooling. This is one we've got, this is gonna be a two-parter. This is part one of the adjustment. So what we're looking to do here is open up the opportunity for homeschool children in our district to be able to be eligible to participate in extracurricular activities. So the first step in this is making a minor change to our current policy, this is in yellow on your form, where it indicates that they, anyone educated in a home-based program within the district may have access to public school activities of extracurricular nature upon approval of the superintendent. That is staying in the, I guess, the, the wheelhouse of, of the superintendent every year has to improve a homeschool policy's curriculum. Is it? Consider curriculum.
Curriculum, it's the curriculum.
Yeah, he has to improve their curriculum. So upon that approval, that basically will then open up them to have an opportunity to participate. We've indicated in here and read that the home education students will not be eligible for curricular educational programs. And we still have, will not be able to receive a high school diploma from the district. But this is the, the adjustment that does open up the opportunity for them to participate in extracurricular activities. We do have a subsequent additional policy that we pulled from another district that helps clarify what the requirements are going to be to make it nice and clear. Because Principal Tremell is gonna be the one responsible for sort of implementing this policy to ensure that the, the children that are participating in sports actually meet all of the MIAA guidelines. So.
Did I hear you say in the earlier, in that, when we gave in on that meeting, that this is eligible for the spring or that would be the idea?
Well, what we're, where we're at right now is we've got this policy, we've gotta go through three readings. So we've got the second one in November, we've got our two meetings in December. We'll vote on this at the end, the last meeting in December. We have already by luck, already have it approved in MIAA that the district will be allowed to have homeschool kids participate in our athletics programs. So once this gets approved, it's gonna be right in the middle of winter season, so we won't be able to do anything for that. But we approved the sec, the sort of supplemental policy that's gonna be coming next month. We'll go through the three readings for that. That'll be approved by the middle of January. And so that means that's gonna open the door basically for any homeschool children in our district to be able to participate in spring sports with the district. So, yeah, because we are, right now, we are the only school district that I'm aware of, and all of Western Mass that does not allow this. The nice thing that we're working on right now with that supplemental policy is that we might be the last district to bring this on board, but we might be the, the district that's actually making sure that it's being implemented and, and followed through correctly so that we can justify, and if anybody questions us about the eligibility of one of the children on our teams that's a homeschool, we'll be able to make sure that that is yeah, documented and supporting that we're doing it the right way, so. Any comments on this? Superintendent Willard, do you wanna, everything looks good?
We obviously have to have, yeah, I guess they're putting on here, there's some kind of proof of residency of being in these.
Yeah, they have to, there's, there's, they have to be a resident, and a lot of that is, is on the supplemental policy where, where it indicates what the requirements are. They have to be within a certain age. They have to have their primary residence in one of the three towns in the district.
This is what they fill out when they submit it to me.
Yeah. Yeah, and then what will, what will happen is what we're working on right now is just some clarifying language for that. Oh, it's actually in your packet. I, I, we're not bringing this one up tonight, but it's, it's their plan's gotta be approved by the superintendent. They have to, the principal needs to determine that they're eligible. That's what we're working on. We're just getting some clarifying language for that, for attendance and for academic eligibility. They've gotta reside in the town of Southwood Town or Granville. And then we've got a couple of changes there, but we'll bring that next month after we can clear up some language and get that approved. So hopefully, we get this done. Starting in the spring season, we'll have, anybody in the district that wants to be able to play sports that's eligible is gonna be able to, will we make some kind of announcement somewhere? Oh, yeah.
I, I have to, because I, I, when I approve a plan, I just approve it based on daily logs, journals, progress reports, portfolios, or dated work samples. I can't be specific on what they're going to use them as to measure their child's progress. However, if they're gonna participate, they need some sort of progress report, because it's the principal's job to make sure that the students have passing grades. And so they're gonna need some sort of like computerized printout. Most of our high school students do their homeschooling online, because it's so course-specific. So they would just have to print out whatever they're taking for that course, how much progress they've made on the content, and whatever they're believing. So they would, because I don't, I just approve, it could be any of those things, but to play this point, they do need to have a progress report.
Right. I'm talking more about like the, uh, once we approve something like this, how do we communicate it to the, the towns that those kids that are homeschooled, obviously, aren't on all our communications?
We have homeschoolers.
She knows everyone, because they have to say that.
Okay, but we'll communicate them to, to them somehow, just to let everybody know that they're eligible, because.
Yeah, I mean, once we get to, we get into the middle of December, this will get approved, and we'll, we'll have the other one up for second reading. I mean, we can know that that's gonna be coming down the pike. I'm sure Superintendent Willard, but we'll send out a notification at the beginning of the year. That's gonna be more than enough time, because winter season goes right through the end of February, so.
And the, the difficult thing is, unless they're following us on Facebook or something, like our, they're gonna have to let us know if they wanna be on like the sports email that go out from date, because they're not in our Blackboard connect. So there's like this little piece that they're gonna have to be proactive to communicate to us in order, or they're just gonna have to follow our Facebook or.
Yeah, once we, once we, I, I don't think we're gonna have, I mean, we've only got, how many homeschool kids do we have in the entire district? In, in high school, like, that would actually be eligible for this. It's gotta be forty or less, right? In that ballpark.
Maybe.
That number sounds like the target for the whole thing. No, I think it was eighty, right?
Eighty-four or something we have.
I think a high school level, like middle, like seven and above, is somewhere in that forty-ish range. I mean.
All of, most of our students who chose homeschool this year, I think all of our kids who, that were in our district last year, that opted, opted for homeschool this year, were the new ones, were in seventh grader above. I think I was looking at that today when I was putting together my budget roundtable. So that was just an interesting piece of data.
So that IHBGA that's in your packet, hold off on that, because that one's not, we're not up with that one right now. That's gonna be the one-on-one that's coming through. Any questions on this before we move forward? Alright, fantastic. So, I'm gonna find mine. Huh?
This came to me actually.
Yeah, action items.
Okay, you're off. Move to approve the Southwood Regional School
I got it.
Strategic Plan for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year recommended.
Sorry. Can I get a, any questions on this? The question's gonna get a showing hands for approval for this actually. Okay, Amy, that passes six zero zero.
Move to accept the memorandum of agreement between the Southwood Town and Granville Regional School District and the Southwood Town and Granville Education Association, Association, which outlines the terms, conditions, and understandings related to payment to the Woodland and Paternville School nurses for additional work performed on Saturday and/or Sunday through the end of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year recommended.
Any questions on this at all, eh? Alright, is there any questions? You're gonna show hands for approval. Amy, let the record show that passed six zero zero.
Move to approve the updated substitute pay schedule changes effective eleven seventeen, twenty twenty-one.
Any questions on the substitute degrees? Any questions? Can I get a show of hands to approve? Motion passes six zero zero.
Just a quick question, I'm sorry, out of order before we go on, but we also discussed an executive session changing the other substitutes, so I just wanna make sure everyone's clear that it's not just the substitute teachers, it was all the other substitutes.
Yes.
Okay, just wanna be very clear about that.
That's the change with the current.
Care, yes, the substitute care professional, substitute clerical. I just wanna make sure that's included in the narrative. Just wanna be very clear on that here. Okay, move to approve the twenty-one, twenty-two Southwood Regional School fundraiser natural honor society volleyball tournament proceeds to benefit NHS scholars. Recommended.
Wow. A volleyball tournament? Like six v six volleyball tournament at our school?
Yeah, it's a tradition.
Was?
Yeah, we do.
You're bringing it back?
Yeah.
Okay.
We can do it last year.
I'm surprised.
I didn't know we had a national honor society. Okay, well, any other questions?
Oh.
No?
Yeah, we had any just, I was part of it when I was.
Volleyball.
It's a big deal.
Okay, show of hands to approve the new and improved volleyball tournament. Motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the twenty-one, twenty-two Southwood Regional School fundraiser class of twenty twenty-four Summer House proceeds to benefit the class of twenty twenty-four. Recommended.
So moved.
Sorry. Right after the volleyball tournament, right?
Should do it.
At the Summer House.
Yeah, after. Alright, can I get a show of hands to approve the Summer House? Alright, motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the twenty-one, twenty-two Southwood Regional School fundraiser class of twenty twenty-four Candygram sales proceeds to benefit class of twenty twenty-four. Recommended.
Any questions on Candygram? This is sponsored by the local dentist office, right? Anybody got any questions? Show of hands to approve the Candygram. Alright, motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the twenty-one, twenty-two Southwood Regional School fundraiser class of twenty twenty-four Snack Shack at Winter Sports Home Events proceeds to benefit the class of twenty twenty-four. Recommended.
Second.
Questions on the Snack Shack?
Just for clarification, everything will be prepackaged. There'll be no home base books.
Twenty twenty-four is really getting it. They're, they're fundraisers.
Yeah, I mean, they're.
I was gonna say.
They're not gonna have to pay for anything. They'll have it all fundraised. Can I get a showing hands to approve this? Motion should pass a six zero zero.
Move to approve the twenty-one, twenty-two Southwood Regional School fundraiser Spanish Club popcorn sales proceeds to benefit trip to Peru. Recommended.
Questions on the popcorn sale for Peru? The question can show hands to approve. Motion passes six zero zero.
I move to approve the twenty-one, twenty-two Southwood Regional School fundraiser T-shirt sales proceeds to benefit United Sports, Unified Sports. Recommended.
Any questions on the unified sports? Any questions? Get a showing hands to approve this one. Motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the class of twenty twenty-two Senior Trip to High Meadow in North Grammy, Connecticut for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year recommended.
Any questions on High Meadow? Is this a tradition too?
Oh, yeah, because I, I did that also last year.
Oh, well, yeah.
And we voted, the seniors, we all voted where we wanted it, for majority.
Well, then, you don't want Wally Park?
High Meadow has a pool.
I would say, there's a lot more at High Meadow. I don't know, it's just, I feel like it'd be easier to go there all the time.
It sounded great. You've never been there?
It's on East Street, right?
Mister Joe would like to go to the.
One eighty-nine. You're right, you're right. I go by it.
Yeah, ice cream and clam chowder and over toast.
Ice cream and clam chowder.
Yeah, but they got other food too, but.
There's a camp there. You'll see the High Meadow buses.
You said horses.
Alright, can I get a show of hands to approve High Meadow? Motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the district's plan for the American Rescue Plan Act ESR three funds as presented. Recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions on our Easter three funding? Jenny did a fantastic job of that.
She presented it to I L T the week before.
So she had practice.
But at least I L T dealings aren't due.
Thanks, can I get a, motion, can I get the show of hands to approve? Motion passes six zero zero. Alright, superintendent, you are up, your report.
A few things, one, I just, the current COVID rates as of the latest dashboard on the Mass Gov website, Southwood currently is thirty four cases of COVID, Granville is two. It has one. But our current vaccination rate vaccination rate has gone up to fifty five percent, it's fifty four point eight percent. So we are creeping along, but the good news is we did do a survey. For the potential of holding a clinic here for students five through eleven, it doesn't, I mean, grades. Ages five through eleven, it doesn't have to be, it could be, it's open to anybody, it's open to adults, it's open for anybody who wants to get vaccinated, we're working right now. With the board, director of board of health and our public health nurse. On coming up with a time, the location is going to be at Powdermill School, and we are looking at the auditorium after school hours. We did a survey and we had over eighty people say that they were interested in signing up if we hold a clinic. And what do we have the last time, thirty something at the?
Last time I think we had. I don't know how many people attended.
Thirty some, was it thirty or forty? Forty something, and they thought that was a lot, so.
So we have to set up two dates, alright?
Yes, it'll be two days, it'll be one day, and then we'll be twenty one days after that for the second one.
And then whoever, who, so who do we have, is it the? The nurses at the board of health that come and do that, or we bring in C V S?
Curate, who does, used to do the E C M all, they're the ones who did our first one, they put, they do the mobile.
Yeah, because we're gonna have to have two different dosages, because the younger kids get the third of a dose.
Yes. They they do this all over, it's not even us, we don't do anything, we just give them the place and they take care of all the paperwork.
Awesome.
So that was good, and I just want to report out that. Pat Jeb and I went to the Mass Mass Conference. It was very different this year than in previous years, uh. Attendance was cut by, I would say, a fifth of what there usually is, you know, vendors there, it was very different. They, a lot of what they were talking about, there was a lot of conversations around diversity, equity. The school boards, what school boards are going through, a lot of the public comment, and just trying to, you know, stay to the purpose. Stay to the core values, stay to your mission. And just be as transparent as possible, you know, listen to the community. But move forward with what we know is best for kids and creating an environment where all students belong. Do you want to add anything?
I I actually, you said everything I was thinking, I I thought it was a pretty good experience. Hopefully I get to go back again, and hopefully there's a larger, you know, crowd, and I'll say that everybody that I met, you know, you introduced me to, were very. Warm and inviting and. Offered a lot of their, you know. Say advice if I needed it, and you know, and I I I thought it was a great experience. Sitting in the the various. Meetings were kind of fun and that's, like I said, that's a people I never expected to meet, good time.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much for going.
Yeah.
We can have more than one person, just so you know.
Oh, no way, a whole group.
Yes. No, you can't have a whole group, you can have three, because over four, it's a problem.
You can have four, you can have a whole.
What a scandal, but that's it, so we could have four, including you?
Yeah. I'm not part of the committee.
No, 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 right, we could have, we could have three plus you. Okay. So we could have four.
Alright.
I can do both, we have to have four.
Right.
We were with them a lot.
Yeah. Great, great crowd.
Very good, thank you very much.
Yes.
Mister Presnell, what fun and exciting things do you have for us to see?
Well, I just wanted to let you, let the committee know, I I had the good fortune today of traveling to Boston, Beacon Hill, to meet with. Executive Office of Technology Services and Security folks who are. Asked us to participate in development of a promotional video that they're doing to try to recruit. More cities, towns, school districts to participate in their cybersecurity awareness training. So I was one of maybe six or eight. Municipal school district officials, they weren't doing them all today, it's over a few different days. Just providing some feedback to them in the form of a a videotape interview that they'll use to try to promote the program going forward. They also presented us with our cyber aware community certificate that. We have, did you bring that with you, Amy, or is that in your office?
Things I didn't get.
Yeah, that's okay. Um, just a a nice little certificate, and we achieved that because of our high participation rates, we're. We're pretty much in the eighty percent range, closing in on that for for the last couple of modules. So.
So hence why they were interviewing you to see how we could, what we do and how they could do it.
Yeah, they were doing that with a lot of their high achieving or high participation rate communities and and schools.
I'm a little bit contributing in the chair.
Oh.
Okay, I don't have my camera.
You gotta stand up and get a picture.
Oh, Steve, we're gonna get a picture, you and me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sir's behind us.
Yeah, there's Sam in the back.
They have like a hound.
We'll shut down the whole.
I'm not going, it's, yeah. Under a train, can we get that? Steve, it's like we got a, got a diploma.
Gold in box.
Yeah, that's good.
It really is a big deal. It really is.
Smile. We get management for next week, it's not gonna be good, okay?
Okay, click on any list or open any attachment.
Sounds like calling eighty percent from somebody.
Oh, I didn't click on something today, I, because I was gonna ask Steve if it was real or not, and so I didn't click on something today, you do, you.
Yeah, the training is great.
It is great.
The the wonderful thing about it is it's free, the state sponsors it. Because it's the Commonwealth who's supporting it, it, I think it carries some weight with our employees, it's not like the district just hired a private sector firm to do it, and. It's just the district making us do one more thing, this is, this is like, it has the weight of the Commonwealth. Behind it, and we're looking forward to participating again next year.
Well, I mean, it's real, I mean, there are communities and districts and municipalities are getting with this.
People are getting hit very hard, I had the.
And unfortunately, it doesn't sound like there's a solution, like most of these guys are on the pay rate. It it's.
Yeah, they're starting to find ways to recover some of the money, but I did have the opportunity to meet with some of the staffers for, you know, T S S, and we talked about. You know, some challenges that they're facing and where where it's, where it's going in the industry, so. We have to do the best we can, knowing that we're, you know, no matter how much training we we do, we're we're not completely immune to it. Certainly raising the awareness among all of our employees who who are knowledge-based workers, or faculty, support staff, administrators.
Do we still, do we still do the regular fishing?
It's part of this program is the is the fishing attempts, mock fishing.
They catching the mackerel.
Oh, we caught the old.
Got a few, got a few.
The cops on?
But folks are. Are 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 figuring it out and catching on, so.
Yeah, the key is when you say you've won the lottery, or let's hope in this one.
Is that where the prince from Nigeria says, you can take my money and?
Yeah, but we did have a legit. One where we, some of us followed all the correct protocols. And did, you know, the held the cursor hover hovered over it, see who's actually sending it. It actually was the person sending it, but that person's account got hacked. But we all opened it, clicked on it, it was, you know, somebody who I would definitely click on something from them. And was clicking on the thing to open. And they said, put in your username and your password, I didn't even think twice about it. Yeah, because it was from. Somebody at my level in, you know, town and. Yep, so I had to quickly call. Our technology department, and I said, change my password, and they did, and it happened to a couple other people and. Because this is, even when you follow all the steps, there are still things that can happen.
They're usually very poorly written, but some did a bit better.
This was not.
They are getting better.
They're getting better, so.
Do we have two factor authentication when they sign in?
Uh, we do not.
Is there, I mean, have you thought of going to that?
We we use it, we use it for certain tasks, certain operational things such as.
Payroll?
Payroll.
That's a good one to have.
You know, payment requests, things like that, so. We're 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 starting to talk about it with our I T folks.
Because I mean, M F A is so easy to set up now with, I mean, are we, we're on Microsoft.
We are.
Teams, I mean.
Yeah.
Every, I mean, obviously, all the teachers have smartphones, they have all this stuff set up, so.
Yeah, we started a dialogue on that a couple of months ago, so more to come.
Very good one. Alright, anything else, Mister Presnell?
Uh, I think that's for me this.
No other rewards, no certificates that you got?
No, it'll be a long time before.
Alright, subcommittees and liaisons. Negotiations. Any updates, Joe?
Yeah, we had another meeting with the custodial unit. And what's what did he say?
You couldn't remember.
You were there. But, yeah.
Very well.
Yeah, it didn't go well.
Yeah, I think they're, they were pleasantly surprised by what we put forward to fire with, so I think we're, they even suggested we're pretty close.
Yeah, we served it short down there.
Yeah.
Oh, good. Very good. Finance, we have a meeting on Thursday at nine, right?
Yes, yes, and I think that I mentioned to you, we'll have a presentation from our O P E V, yeah.
And I just want to go over quickly the budget roundtable stuff.
Yep.
On that day as well.
Yep, yeah, which is on, be coming up at Old Business, but that's on December the second, we've got our. Joint meeting with the three towns. And the finance committee for the subcommittee for the school, the school committee's gonna be there. L B, L P VAC, cooperative.
That's to me, and my first meeting's tomorrow.
Oh, I have one tomorrow too. Yeah. Is it the Zoom, are they doing yours?
No, it's in person.
Really?
Well, mine's in cyberspace, so we're having our Zoom tomorrow.
I was there today.
Oh, I think that's great deal.
Yeah, alright, well, that's cool, well, I'm having mine there, well, tomorrow night, we're having our first L P VAC Board Corporation one, so. We'll find out what's going on, I'll report on that in a week.
Oh, it's in person, now I need to.
Uh, policy, we had a meeting tonight. We are close to moving. Dress code policy up to everybody, that'll probably be up here our, in a month. We will be moving up the follow-up policy for the homeschool with the detail next month. And we will have the policy for smoking. For smoking, coming up, Amy gave me a little smoke, she knew I was looking for it. So we'll have the policy for smoking coming up next month, so we are the goal. Superintendent Willer and I already talked about this in our last meeting, our goal is to have three policies in that committee, in that subcommittee at all times, because we have. A ton of stuff apparently to move through, so we are going to be diligent and expeditious, but.
What's the dress code one related to, have we talked about that?
Hats. Hats, they've done, they actually have a couple of the students did a lot of work with Mister Pesca Telly. Times have changed and they're looking to allow hats, with the exception of like test days, stuff like that, we don't want anything on the rims of the, rims of the hats. They wouldn't even be smart enough to think of that.
No, I wouldn't.
They'll figure, they'll figure that out, whatever, but yeah, so other than sort of extenuating circumstances like superintendent Willer came up with a good one today, like we don't want the one with the hats, they're gonna have a bunsen burner underneath them, we don't want to. We don't want to have any fire with the hat. So we'll have, you know, common sense things, but other than.
They grew up in the east. Many of my kids, like children's book where they put a parrot under there, like they're picked up at school.
No, no, I don't think we're gonna, oh, I don't know.
Oh, it's actually.
It's a pirate book, it's very well liked to my house.
This is only a policy for the middle school and high school, so.
Woodland, Woodland.
Sorry, well, hey, they could think of it at high school level.
Yeah. So that, so we will hopefully have a continuing, we shouldn't have a policy be empty at these school committee meetings, so we should have always something up there that we're looking at, so.
Versus the hats, then what's next?
I don't know.
We're going crazy.
Yeah, we're giving everybody going.
Buildings and grounds, Mister Locke, you got any?
No.
Buildings and grounds are secure.
Yep. Just with with, while we're negotiating, we're working on.
The fences are good.
They need more card access.
Are we good? When I, on on buildings and grounds?
Yeah.
Okay. I O T?
We have a meeting after Thanksgiving.
Okay. Wellness?
That was. Uh, we talked, actually, the nurse talked a lot about how Aspen State was going at each of the building.
Right?
We having an uptick on that, I'm assuming a little bit now?
Yeah, yeah, because I guess originally it really didn't have much at high school, but that had, that had upticked to them.
Yeah.
But I think that'll probably come in waves, right?
I think so.
Okay, spread liaison.
We were supposed to have one today, unfortunate circumstances led to us having to cancel.
No.
Did we? Yes, we did, Robin will get back to us after the holiday of other times, yeah. We had it scheduled. Last minute, I.
Last minute, I couldn't do it.
Technology update?
I could offer.
The grindstone, don't work it.
No, I know, but it sounds like we might have a meeting.
I could offer something there, so.
That's not what's supposed to happen.
I was told.
Jonathan was told there would never be a meeting.
Never be a meeting, oh, alright, well, maybe I need to go back. Now, we, so we do have a standing. Meeting instructional technology planning team. And we discussed what might be the best way to engage in technology. Liaisons from the school committee, and so we're thinking that a separate meeting, whereas originally suggesting maybe we invite the members to that standing meeting, but. It gets a little too weedy, so I think doing something separate.
We need like an executive.
You like to tell you're ready, I'm ready to work, so.
You let me know.
So, alright, so I'll reach out to you guys with, I think it's you and Dan?
Yeah.
Side negotiations, Andy sounds like.
Yeah, okay.
He's had no meetings with it for the last two years, so you can have.
So we're gonna reach out with and and look for some dates that might work for for everybody, and and then bring some of the key, key folks in. And present to. To the committee members, the liaison.
Awesome. Great, Southwick Master Planning Committee, tomorrow, right, Pat?
Thursday.
Thursday, first meeting Thursday?
So the first meeting I was not able to attend, I was emailed the minutes, and I was sworn in on this, so I am officially. On that committee, not just on paper, so. When I go Thursday, I will. The team and let me know what.
Great, and you already gave us an update on your big party at the Cape.
Sir.
Very good.
We did not party.
Not at all.
Seriously. No fun, zero fun, right?
Zero.
Sir, alright, second public comment. Nobody's here to give public comment, so we can move on to the next. Committee discussion, Old Business. Superintendent Willer?
Just reminder, December second, we will be having the budget roundtable. And I will go over what what I gathered so far for the presentation, and when I meet with the finance subcommittee, if there's anything you want me to add, take out, whatever. Is it your opportunity to let me know what you want me to share?
Take it all out.
Not after that, I just, I also just want to share, I did send it to Chairman Stevens, and that we did get an update. About this C P I slash inflation. And last year, for our foundation budget, the inflation rate was one point four percent. This year, they're telling us it's going to be between four and five percent, and that is going to impact our minimal local contributions, because we are currently in full harmless. So it's not going to affect our state funding, it's going to affect minimal local contribution. So it's not going to affect our state funding, it's going to affect minimal local contributions. So I'll be sharing that at the budget roundtable.
She can share that, yeah.
It is, I, I, it is what it is, I, there's nothing I can do about it, I don't control minimal local contributions, but I just want to make sure they are aware that this is potentially coming, so I don't want it them to get caught up.
I mean, we've got between that and the. The whole harmless that puts us at risk anyway.
And they talk.
All that does is reduce that, right, Steve, I mean, if the minimum local contribution comes up, it reduces.
Well, harmless, no.
So I gotta change that.
No.
They're also coming off of the year where the final minimum local contribution set by the state is higher than what we actually assessed that we were working on. Governor's, so, yeah.
So you've got lots of good news from them.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna be fun.
Kevlar, Kevlar might be required at the meeting.
They, they're actually, they're very knowledgeable in the school budget, because they've been doing it for so many years and they, in, in Carl keeps them really in the loop. About what's going on at the state level, so they come in a lot of the times well aware of the information that was presented.
Their budget is our budget, so.
Or more, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a large chunk of their financial distribution, so it doesn't surprise me that they're aware of it.
Yes.
Uh, new business, we're gonna need business. I got one thing, I don't know, I just bring it up because everybody's here. I know I talked to superintendent Willard about this a couple of weeks ago, but lockers. At the high school, middle school, I had another conversation this afternoon with a parent. That's asked. Why can't the kids have lockers, so. I know that when we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, is the information that we got from Principal Trammell was. If somebody wants a locker, they can have a locker.
Correct.
One of the challenges that I heard tonight, which was interesting, was that. Yes, they can have a locker, but they're giving them special lockers in special areas, so they're almost like. It sounds like they're kind of. Ice, not isolating, but setting them apart where they'll be. It'll be easy for people, well, wait a minute, why are they there? No, no, now here's where it gets, this is where it gets interesting, you can help me out with this. Like eleventh grade, twelfth grade. All have their own lockers, they know where they are, they just don't normally use them, right?
No, like I haven't, I haven't visited my locker ever.
No, no, but, but if you wanted to, if you wanted to put a big heavy coat in there, you could.
Yeah, I definitely could.
Okay. I do hear you on that.
Totally put all my stuff in my locker.
Right, yeah.
We just, we, we, I'm sure that parent's name, right, that called us, we have already spoken to Principal Trammell.
Yeah.
We said, call the building and the principal's going to be reaching out to this parent.
Yeah.
So far and below from what we do up here, like, I don't know what's going on with lockers, I just know that if people want a locker, if people want a locker, please call Principal Trammell, he'll get your child a locker.
No, yeah. But I think part of the issue is, is that like the tenth grade students. Because of COVID, we're never told where their lockers were, like at the beginning of the year, eleventh grade's not an issue, twelfth grade's not an issue. Tenth graders don't even know where their locker is, even if they have one.
It's because initially we would always have that first homeroom of the school year, where it's like, here's your course list and it says your locker on it and like your locker combination of like the locker room. And that's like the first introduction and like, you have your locker, and I think we like visit them, like you go, because your homeroom locker is near all the other ones. It's, but, but people that didn't have that first homeroom because of hybrid never got their high school lockers, so if they want lockers, just have them call Principal Trammell.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering, like, I know last, it might be worth. A communique or something, because it sounds like there are a lot of people that just, like, I know even the ninth grade, they have no idea. And the seventh and eighth graders don't even think they're allowed to have locks. So there's, there's more and more people that just keep, I don't, I just thought I'd bring it out.
I believe it's a valid point, Trammell, though.
I, I don't know, like, they're.
What do you guys, they have like a shirt on that you bring to campers?
They don't really have textbooks because they got their computers.
Everything's online, all online.
I think like I have four big books.
Yeah.
I got my computer and notebook.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Because like the seventh graders, sorry, I didn't. In seventh and eighth grade, we use the lockers. Yeah, because they have, they're going out for sports now, for high school and sports, and so they have their soccer bags or their, you know, field hockey bags, plus their bags with all their books and stuff, and then so my little, you know. Twelve year old now is taking two bags to school and they're like, you know.
Where are the overs in class, like, so they're stuff.
All day.
The locker.
Usually like.
Oh, you got your own locker in the locker room?
No.
They're in a gym class.
No, they just drop them in, see, this is what I, they just drop them in the, in the changing room, right?
Yeah, we just give them on the floor, they're on the floor.
So they're secure.